All right, we're ready to open the public hearing, continue public hearing under RGFA for Six Cutters Bluff. So keep this to maybe, let's try for a half an hour and see how we do. If you could keep your presentation for fifteen minutes or so, then that would give us a chance to comment on the board, get our consultants' comments, get comments from the public. So who is opening the presentation for the applicants?
I'll do the opening. My name is Jonathan White, I'm representing the owners of Six Cutters Bluff. They just purchased the property this summer. And the presenting, the main presenters today are the engineer Ralph, then Carlos, and Sammy Cassis who's behind the house. Just to orient you and give you a little history, I know three of you at the site were, I guess Roy, no.
I was correct.
But this relates to a flexible development special permit that goes back to 2000. Looking at the records, the first houses on this subdivision were built in around 2003, 2004. For quite a while, three lots have not been purchased, these two right here and the subject lot right here. As far as what's in the neighborhood, I've got you a handout of sizes and lot sizes. But I'll quickly run you through it. Two of the houses probably aren't worth spending much time on. Your directions want us to use houses that are bought as well as houses, you know, the front, on the side and across the street. So we've included these two houses on White House Lane, and you can see their sizes there. But, you know, they're not, they're behind it, but they're really a totally different neighborhood. So I think the emphasis should be these houses on Cutters Bluff. The house right beside it is Three Cutters Bluff, 4837. And one thing that's interesting, and as part of the special permit, the houses are supposed to be the greater of ten percent of the lot in 3500. All these houses, not by lot, some by a fair amount, all of them are over ten percent. The petitioners have intentionally kept this one at ten percent, it's forty-seven something or other. So, Two Cutters Bluff, this, if you went on the site block, this is not what you would see on the site block. This one's grown in. This was from the tax assessors, we wanted a picture that you could see the house. Next house up, right beside the lot at 4800 square feet, these are all RGFA. We didn't have to guess because they all had to show John what their RGFA was, and they went through site plan approval also. So, 4800 across the street. One other thing that's of interest, because it's a flexible lease, these properties are right, some of them are right close to the road. So this one across the street is 5842, up top, right beside it, much higher. And Ralph goes over the site plan, you'll see the height difference. But this one's, it's a larger lot, and they've got 6462. At the end of the street, 6506. And right here, this is another one where, this is one where the trees have grown in, you can't see it when you drive on the street. That's from the tax assessors, that's 7600. And those are White House Lane. So that's orienting you to the neighborhood. As I said, you know, we've kept it at ten percent, which is less than the other houses. The other thing, and I'll give you a photograph later, it's a challenging lot because of the size and shape. But also, we assume it's from this house, and we've got a picture of what happened. The rubble from this house was thrown in the front yard in this one. We've got one, when the work was being done, it's all over it, but they still found a place to put the septic system in the front. So that's the neighborhood, then I'll have Ralph describe the lot itself.
Good evening, my name is Olfantarius with Alpha Omega and I'm a six foot tall. The original design we had actually, before the design actually was set itself, they had a soil testing before in this low area down here.
It's actually right up there on the.
Yes.
Do you want to work out the wall?
Whatever, that's fine.
We have a pointer.
Could you move that board down?
Yeah, I'm done with mine, done with mine. So, it used to be a design, a soil system running this area here, I think it was both usable. And it has like a site for soil testing. The only problem is here, is just to access this area for the septic system. This is a very steep area, that means we have to build a retaining wall down here just to get an access for here. Plus, you have to cut all these trees to put the septic system in, and it's very steep. When I looked at the soil map, I found that there is a good soil in this whole area here, it's sandy soil. And when we did the soil testing in here, we found that it's a very good soil, good sandy for test for the septic system. So we don't have to have a mounted system or retaining wall like the one in the back here from the neighbor. And in the meantime, we will have room for a septic drainage system right here, and we get the house right here. So we'll fit everything in this open area, which is almost, that's existing open area with a few trees, without impacting the slope in here or cutting any of the trees in the back. We had a design before, we shown a two foot, or two three feet retaining wall here. And in order getting the sidewalk, we requested to see if we can save the trees in the back, which is those. We tried to do that by building a nine foot wall, starting from the setback line here. And removing the retaining wall a little bit around to follow the contour 164. The problem is, you can have a nine foot high retaining wall, but not able to save the tree because the wall is only about five, six feet away from the trees. So the trees will die anyway. So we did another design with a four foot high retaining wall, better slope than here, and we adding more trees in the back. Thank you. So, we built about, the was from here to this point is about two to three feet high. Then from this point where the setback line goes up here is about four feet high. It's lesser than the opposed one. We have a better slope to plant trees on it. And we have multiple trees in here that will be doing all the screening for us on the back of the neighbors. And also during the sidewalk, you requested more screenage for the neighbor on the side. We added trees for white spruce on this area right here. And we saving more wooded area in here via the new grading that we added in the last time.
Can you read out what was there for trees on the top, Ralph?
We proposing two little oak, ten white pines right here, two spruce, and one Norway spruce right here. And one silverberry right here, and then with some shrubs on the bottom.
So just so I'm clear, I know we were sort of nervous about the number of tall trees that were being removed, the line of trying to take the thing. So all those trees do have to go out just the same, you're just replanting in front of them, you're just augmenting that order. I mean, you didn't really get to save any of those trees. I mean, I don't know.
The trees that we tried to save, which is in this area right here, those tall trees, we couldn't save.
Couldn't do it, okay.
But the wooded area right here, this is the area we're saving, but it doesn't have really large trees that we're saving, and we adding more trees in.
It's your underplanting.
But you show some existing trees, sort of coming in along the back property line, still there. If you could identify the trees that are remaining.
Sure.
Right now, it just looks like a sort of cloud of what could be trees. Which ones are you able to save? You know, that's the question.
The ones really saving are like five inches and less, actually, most of them are very small trees, not so large. That's why we haven't actually located every individual one. But the ones that were in concern were right here, in this area here, between the two ledge, right here.
Maybe you go back to the other.
In the back. It's these ones right here, we couldn't really see it, which is the location is about right here. But here, there's some wooded area, which is a smaller tree.
Ralph was asked to see what he could do to save. I thought they were on the ridge, it turned out they're halfway up the slope. But asked to see what he could do to save it, and when he came up with it, it's going to be a nine foot high wall. Because to have any backyard, going to have to have that. But what we do gain, okay, trees are still going to be taller than the house. We put them on top of the ridge.
And this is what it's like.
It challenges the slope, though, it's the whole thing, so if you go stuff, and then you have the house, and then you have trees framing the house in the same way, but during the mass.
Yeah, right now, you see the two houses. But the neighborhood, those pictures of the neighborhood, one of them is 2008, pretty instructive how quickly they grow. Even from the start, the house is on the top of that ridge because of the swamp. Will be higher than the house, you'll see those, not a lot of them, but you'll see the tops.
What height are they proposing?
It's mostly actually ten, twelve to fourteen in the back area right here. Mostly will be twelve to fourteen feet, and some of them like ten to twelve, these ones.
So can you just point to the general area of where the existing trees are, and some of the trees that you're saving?
The existing trees are, you see that line right here, this is the tree line that the area we're saving, but those are small trees, not like five inches or less.
So it's more or less all your trees?
Yes.
And shrubs. It's the shade, it's too bad.
The problem, we couldn't trace the house as much because it just, the driveway would be very steep, to have a driveway that's steep.
I didn't see that that big.
Yeah, we asked them to look at pulling the house forward.
They've got, they've created this more retaining wall, a much bigger planting area, and it actually has got that big house.
Yeah, but if you remember the sidewalk?
Yeah, well, this is why I was trying to look here, which trees.
Right, but what you see, what you see, the image was, that new house is going to be framed against the backdrop of the tall trees behind it. Those could disappear, now it's going to jump up, you know, it's just going to.
It's no natural integration in other words.
Right, that's, remember, we talked about.
I do remember, but they're putting, but they've created a much bigger planting area than having this star bridge. But it's a bigger planting area, it's bigger.
Yeah, but bigger has a height.
No, I'm talking about density and the width that they can plant into as opposed to.
Remember, this is the house beside it, it looms over it, and there's nothing behind that.
We weren't talking about planting, we were talking about saving. You know, you've cut those forty to fifty footers down, plant ten to twelve, it's a completely different landscape. I don't care how much depth you have, you don't have, you're losing that space behind the house.
On the other hand, it was just very narrow, it was all backed up with open space. Right, because this is all this big, flat area.
Do you remember standing on the road and seeing what you, can you visualize what it would look like?
I'm trying, yes.
Remember the words "jack in the box"?
Yes.
Okay, that resonated, because you could visualize the house on that hill, on that plateau. And the only thing that gives it scale is that, is the screen of trees behind it. Subtract those, and the only thing you're going to see is the house.
Except with the land running up behind it, because remember it's backed up.
You can't see the land behind it.
But it's backed up by this great big ridge.
You won't be able to see it because the house will be screening the slope. The house will screen the slope. So what you will see is the crown of trees, of the trees behind it, which are trees. Now you won't see anything.
Well, then their options are like a nine foot fence that they want, I mean, this is like crazy.
What about staggering the walls? You know, so that just one.
You want to do a whole series of them? Have you considered that?
We tried, but the problem is, we're only about, this is about fourteen feet right here, and this is about zero feet to the wall. So to stagger the wall, the trees are exactly here, in this area right here, the existing trees. So if I stagger the wall, still, I mean, I'm going to be affecting the tree roots itself. The thing is, we, the land also will be lowered, and this back area here will be lowered about five feet. Yes, so the house will be lowered, it's not going to be as high as you can see it anywhere.
The house is twenty, a little bit over twenty seven.
Twenty seven feet thick tall. Part of it is to, what's frustrating is for me as a designer, is the necessity of having something as flat as Kansas to put the house on. You know, if you had a sloping site, why not work with a sloping site? Why plane everything off and make it flat, and then push the grading back around it? So that now you have this nice flat table top to put the house on. I mean, one of the things that, one of the, one of our standards and conditions, well, many of them, focus on preservation of the existing topography and landscape. This is, this is going to strip it all, I mean, it's just gone except for the back corners of the lot. And then you're going to come back and you're going to plant things that are fourteen feet high, and how does that conform to our standards?
This is what we see happening throughout the town.
Yeah, does that make it right?
Well, I'm not sure it makes it right, but it's what we have allowed throughout the town.
Not quite to this extent, though. If there's a landscape feature which makes a big, a difference to the design of the house, that's important to preserve, why not preserve it? Why not?
One of my concerns is, you know, the flat area, they're creating a lot of it is because of the septic in the house side by each. To preserve that back corner, the, you know, that part off the inside, that's why I'd read. And, you know, that's a big chunk that's not getting touched. If the septic was to go back there, because the house moves up or come, you know, it just seems pretty efficient up front, to leave the back alone.
Well, all I'm saying is that if, if you didn't have to have a table, flat surface to put the house on, if you could work with a contour so that you didn't have to push the contours back against the back property line, then maybe you could save some of those trees. What always happens is the, is this stereotypical house design that drives the bus.
Correct.
Well, does it have to drive the bus every time?
No, it hasn't. We don't really see that many, it goes, now we get very theoretical, it goes back to, to, then the planning board can dictate the style of the home. So have trees following, sort of beautiful contour following home, jungle of trees that's built downtown. We're seeing.
How does it restrict the house? We're talking about iteration of the house.
Well, because they're designed, they do these standard little designs, you know.
Well, I'm just saying that we're going to naturally access to the back of this person.
But you have to drop down the garage, down the stairs.
What is the visibility of the small portion, in other words, that you're not developing? That's completely off.
This portion? The thing is, if the land slopes from the front to the back downward, it's easy to make a back, a wall, a basement. And then you can follow the slope, but if it's going from the front to back going up, you need access from the back of the property itself for the house, for the first floor. Otherwise, the first floor will have to have a complete wall and ceiling to follow the contour.
Yeah, but I think that that's not out of the question totally.
You change the floor levels in the house, you know, it's, one of the reasons for the design standards for this, for this development was because the planning board felt that the shingle style design would enable the house designs to blend in better with the contours. That's why we spent the time and trouble to write the design standards on this thing, the house design standards. We don't typically do that with flexible subdivisions, but we did for that one.
So would shingle style work with this kind of, I mean, I'm just.
Yeah, of course it would, because you're talking about, you know, sort of an organic architecture, not, you know, not the straight, sort of center entrance colonial, everything on a flat plank kind of, kind of design. But something that would more organically integrate with the contours, that's what we were hoping to do.
Okay.
I mean, there it is.
So when this special permit, this subdivision was done, it was, I mean, I wasn't here at that point, so it was Queen Anne style. And it was, I'm just looking at the other houses that I saw, they didn't seem to be particularly well integrated.
Well, this one is a challenge, that's one of the reasons why it's on the line.
But even the others didn't seem to particularly be much in the turing following.
That's not true.
Really?
The, some of them are on flatter sites, especially the ones higher up on the hill. But, you know, the ones further down hill, like nine, I think it's nine, it's nine, or Six Cutters, that's not, that would try to stay with the original shingle style expression of the house. That's a makeover.
And just at the Far Right House, that doesn't look shingle style.
Those didn't have the, this is the one feature on this lot that matters to the design of the house. The one.
That particular house has a canopy of trees on the middle.
Remember, this is the house beside it, right here. So that, I guess that's, you want to call it a jack in the box, it's more of a jack in the box. At ours, you'll see trees over the top.
Sure we will.
Sure we will, how tall does the tree have to be to see over the top?
It's a buck.
Actually, we have it here.
It's on the slide.
Yeah, but you're looking at it from the street.
Yes.
You won't see it from the street. You won't see it. You have to see the sidelines blocking.
That's 180 to 68 right here, the tree would be about one mile.
You'll never see it from the street, you'll never see it.
How tall should it have to be?
I'm glad they're tall, because it's a pretty steep area.
There's some on the angle. Do you have any sections through the site?
Can I just say one thing, before we go any further? Can you put that other site plan back up?
This one?
Nope, the next one.
The first one?
Yeah. Yeah, so it's, that's ledge, there's two big outcroppings of ledge. It's possible that that grading won't happen.
No, it won't happen.
So all those trees around, and then in between and wrapping in front of that ledge outcrop might have to remain by default. Because they're not going to be able to do the grading.
Unless they've blessed the ledger.
Well, and then, well, if they do, then the rock ledge will be the retaining wall, and it will just, the trees behind it will stay.
So, this is, this is the proposed one seventy contour here, right up there. This one, that one, that. This is the existing one seventy contour right here.
So I'm not sure that this grading has to happen. I don't know which one of these is better than the others.
It's simplified on the stage.
That one, that one, what's going on with the ledge here, you're just ignoring it?
Yeah, it's kind of spreading through it, I think it knocked out, you'd want to leave it, wouldn't you?
I mean, we can leave it, but that's not a good decision. It depends on how much you're going to, I mean, this looks like maybe just a large border, but there's a septic here. And we didn't leave all the areas, and we didn't get like only like seven. So this might be just large borders that may be moved. I'm just wondering about the fact of how this.
There's your septic, actually, our retaining wall. There, there, we are right there.
With this thing, we're able to save some, three and.
This, this looks like, I mean, again, speaking as an architect, this looks like, this is a very good point that these guys are raising. It looks like we could work with this and hang on to some of these trees in his pocket. That's what it looks like to me, almost with just this plan.
You see the trees here? Yeah, the trees actually, yeah.
Right in there. So if you could hang on to that, you know, by bridging across here without.
You're saying a little hole like that.
I think some of these, you know, I'm just too close, but, you know, some of these, the bigger ones, you might.
This is just somebody just drew the lines on the paper, you know, zup, zup, zup. Is there some way to organically design this so that you can preserve some of this, these natural features back here and keep the trees? That's the question.
Yeah, I guess that's maybe a little finer, this overall form of the plan, if we can, if we can save a couple here, maybe it's a second wall in front, maybe it's.
Maybe there's a wall here.
No, that's right, on the trees actually, maybe.
I don't know. I'm just saying, these guys are important. Here's, here's what looks to be a couple pieces of ledge, why not work with it, save those? And then you get, you get that crowd of trees behind the house that I think is important for the house.
If you see here, elevation 164, we actually were trying to retain the wall of the following contour. It's moving 154 on this side, 164 on the other side, that's a nine foot drop for a retaining wall. And that's what actually we have on the spine. And having a retaining wall about six feet, almost six feet from the, from these trees, I don't think the trees will survive.
Yeah, what I would do is.
And if we bring it closer than 164, then it will be maybe twelve feet or ten feet from the house, that's the issue we have. We have like a nine foot five retaining wall, but even a step wall, that's about ten feet or twelve feet away from the house. And that issue would be a struggle.
Can I just ask you one more thing, that's showing this wall on the foot, fourteen feet.
Nine foot for the other.
And that's, and the trees are, the trees are exactly six feet from this wall.
Yeah, can I suggest, I mean, without studying this, if you look at something else, you know, perhaps the driveway could come around here, and you could enter the garage at about 150 in the basement level, taking you into the grade. And then the first level of the house could be closer to like 160, which is this existing grade right here. So you wouldn't have to put a retaining wall there or that close to the house, because the back of the house would be level with the ground that's there.
I would like to use a three minute, I have a two meter wall here, that's steep, if you remember, it's very steep, it was, that would be a pass. That's why I entered the driveway here, that's a two foot drop. So that's two, four, six feet, ten feet drop right here, twelve actually. So that's, you know, going down twelve, that's the distance. So that's why I already entered, like, from the house from.
Forty, one forty-two would be fine.
Four, down to 150. That's about, that's, that's a lot of wood. That's a thirty five foot here, so that's about eight feet and a half. That's actually, we gave these about ten foot process.
What was your, what was your cutoff for the, for locating trees? Anything over eight inches in diameter?
An inch, an inch or so.
Okay. Because it seemed to me there were more that just leaves in the area.
Yeah, just a little bit, an inch or so.
Just look like.
There are more than one or more of them, like, which is a great.
But, you know, I know, like, even those fires kind of help you with the picture. I think you showed here that there's trees that are staying, that are fires, five inch trees. We don't require planted, that's still twenty-five feet.
And I don't know what's in here. No, in this area. No, in this area. You know, you're showing your, this business doesn't, it just completely ignores these two outcroppings. You could say that's a boulder, but it's a boulder as big, half as big as the house. Nice hunches, these are probably ledge protrusions. Why not use them in the landscape and try to work with it? Because otherwise, you're just gonna be blessing the rock, whether it's a huge boulder or in fact ledge. Why not try to use them? And then you're not, you know, because this, these, this doesn't make much sense.
What you like here?
Yeah, well, so it would be helpful to know how, what size these are as well. You know, maybe they're not eight inches, but maybe they're still 20 feet high.
The logic is driven by the fact that for a, for a house to have to make.
Well, this is what, this is what Steve was talking about, you know, take that and stick it on there. You can move it forward.
It's, it's obvious that it made it really difficult to see many of those trees, that it was the size of this structure.
We did send this and option, actually, it's like a wall to join him.
Around looking more?
You could.
This is especially current.
Now, it's just like, you.
But it's for a big development, you've got a lot of control over, you also have a lot of control.
And I cannot shoot this house also because.
Right.
Because that's obviously what's driving the whole thing.
Everything is exactly, you know, setbacks. So I think we need that house.
Could, is it possible to draw a section through?
Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't have enough time.
That's why. You said, why do we need it?
And I think you need to cut one this way too.
Decision after the house is here, and this is just here, actually, after this.
I'd like to just know, I'd like to get the sightlines from here to what's up there. If, if we ju, if we just have to be on a flat, table flat surface and, you know, you gotta shove all the contours back, I want to know how, how high those trees have to be so that when you're in the street here, you still see the trees behind the house. They're not gonna be fourteen footers. They're gonna probably be 25 footers. I'm just saying. So let's find out. Okay.
We just had to establish over the septic.
Oh, no, Leach, not on Leach field, I don't think. Well, maybe.
What, is the driveway going to this?
You gotta get, it's not recommended. You gotta get special border health approval. They'll play.
Nonetheless, it was the.
We, we've done it before, I mean, but.
And even, even this one with the scope, we just.
But it's not, it, they word it in a kind of a crappy way. It's not allowed, but if it's allowed, you have to, basically, it says almost exactly what it says. Yeah, so I'll ask for like a good section through the street through here. I think if you kind of look at this area, maybe pick up some more grays, pick up like the five inch trees, and.
They're a better idea.
You have, almost even, I respect it, like, because I don't doubt that like, you know, these, these are just too, too close, but like, you know, three of these would make a difference. I mean, because they're, they're starting 15 feet higher than the first floor, and they're probably 35 feet high.
That guy, that's, that's an important one. That's an important one. And they're right between the.
The, the contour here, 168, right here and there, which is this one. So it's right here, actually. This one, that's right here. It's about 250.
Okay. Yeah, and maybe just have the, put, if you want to put these trees on, just turn on the grading layer, just put it there, so we can kind of like, because I think we're also kind of, everyone's guessing to make their point. Like, we're, they're thinking they're, they're caught in the back.
Yeah, it's true. Although, that one, I think is that one.
No, this is the.
Oh, no. Okay.
You guys want, we had you talk about the house. You guys want to look at the house?
Yeah.
Actually, this one.
You can have one, one's fine.
I mean, this is the.
I can have it.
What's that?
Uh.
Or could you get.
Does he have a slide?
I mean, I thought. I mean.
What we're saying is like.
No, I'm sorry.
Moving the workforce back. So we gotta be cutting off the side.